I think we're ready. All right, if everyone called the May meeting of the Yarandakoi zoning board of appeals to order, if everyone would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get underway tonight, there's a few administrative matters I need to address. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If so notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevators, use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. Our meetings are recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purposes of a record, not for a verbatim transcript. She also uses that record to prepare minutes of our meetings. So when you come to the podium, it will be helpful to her, if you and to us, if you will identify yourself each time and speak clearly into the microphone. We follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table near the door. Once the case has been called, the applicant or the applicant's representative should come to the podium, state their name, state their address, pause, raise their right hands to be sworn, and then present their case. During the presentation of the applicant's case, these zoning board members have an opportunity to question or engage in discussions with the applicant. Once that process is completed, we will then open the hearing to public input. Anyone wishing to speak to the board has the opportunity to do so during this portion of the meeting. Again, you come to the podium, identify yourself along with your address, and you direct questions and comments to the board. The public input portion presenters do not need to be sworn. Over the years, we've identified three categories of public input. The first is those who wish to speak in favor of the application, and we'll take them first. Then we'll call those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. Once we've heard from those folks, if there are folks who wish to speak to some aspect of the objection of the application but aren't either in favor or opposed to it, such as sometimes people like to talk to us about corner lots, fences, dogs, whatever, chickens. That's the appropriate time there. Once that portion has been completed, then we will give the applicant or their representative the opportunity to address the board again, to reply to any matters that were raised during the public input portion. When that has been completed, the case will close, and we'll move on to the next application on our agenda. Once we have heard all of the cases and conducted all the hearings, the board will take short recess, and then we will return to deliberate and make decisions concerning the cases on the agenda. We do that in a different order. We do that in the order that the case appears on the agenda and for which the applicant remains present. So if the first applicant has left and the second applicant is present, then the second applicant's case would be deliberated and heard first, followed by the next applicant, whose case appears on the agenda and who's still present. And we will take all of the cases for which the applicants remain, then go back to the top of the agenda and deliberate on the cases for which the applicants are not present. During this portion of the meeting, there is no opportunity for any public input unless it is specifically requested by the board. If you are interested in knowing what our decision is, you are free to watch us on, I think we're on Facebook now too, we're on cable TV. We have a number of outlets, or you can call the zoning and planning board in the morning after nine o'clock, and they'll be glad to tell you what our decision was. So we will now proceed to hear the cases that are on our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda would be case number ZB 2021-05-1, upon the matter of request by Christopher Palazzo for an area variance to continue parking a commercial vehicle on premises 5305 St. Paul Boulevard in an R2 residential district.
I am Chris Palazzo, 5305 St. Paul Boulevard.
Raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Basically, I'm here to apply for a variance to keep my truck in my driveway on the property. It's not an excessively large truck. It is a box truck, but it's one of the smaller varieties. I didn't know it was against violation. I've had this thing for like three years. Nobody ever said anything till recently, and then it came to my attention. Nonetheless, you know, it's not, it's just white. There's no emblems on it, there's no logos, no business. It's not a business truck, it's just my personal truck that I use. Let's see, look, just driving around the neighborhood, and there's travel trailers and boats that are bigger than my truck. So I just want to keep it on the property. I know I was told that a solution would be to park it someplace. Well, then you're subjected to possible graffiti or vandalism or worse. At least on my property, it's safe.
Anybody have any questions? I would note that we did receive, along with your application, you submitted five pages of signatures from your neighbors. But I also want to note that we also received anonymous communications from several of your neighbors that were opposed to the truck being allowed to remain in the driveway. Some of those letters expressed concerns about other activities that may or may not be taking place at your property, but that's not before us, and that's not a factor in our decision at all. But I'll just let you know that some of your neighbors at least believe that you are repairing vehicles unlawfully at the property. So and the town is aware of that complaint, and I understand they'll probably be checking on it, so just to make you aware of that. But that, as I said, that doesn't relate to the issue of the truck. That's a separate matter. Other than those generalized concerns about vandalism and other things, is there a reason that it needs to be at your property? Is it your sole vehicle?
No, I've got a regular daily driver, and then I have the truck that I use for special purposes.
One of which you indicated in your letter, if I recall correctly, was that you own rental properties both here in Monroe County and in Florida?
Correct.
And you use that to transport things between here and there?
Correct.
Have you looked into, one of the letters suggested and pointed out that there's a storage area right next to Wegmans in the old Chase Pickin', but there's also the Thomas Avenue Storage Area, which isn't very far from you. There's also a storage area that we approved a couple of years ago off of Washington Avenue. Have you looked into the availability of those as a place to store your vehicle other than your driveway?
No, I have not, but in reference to the one that you're talking about, that's the letter that said possibly try the place next to Wegmans. I didn't get those letters till this morning, so, no, I have not checked into it because I didn't even know anything like that existed.
And I just want you to understand, in the past, just so you're aware, we have denied similar requests for vehicles that homeowners told us they were required to have available to them by their employers, Time Warner, Spectrum, Rochester Telephone, I think among them.
This is not business related.
No, I know that, I know that, and that's why I'm saying, I want you to understand that. Yeah, I realize it's not business related, but the town has these rules in effect, and our job in assessing whether or not you're to be allowed to be given an exception to the rule is what your reasoning is, what alternatives are available, and whether or not your hardship is sufficient to overcome the general rules that are in place. So I know you didn't see the letters until today. I guess my question to you would be this, do you want us to proceed tonight to determine your application? Or would you prefer to adjourn your case to our meeting in June to give you an opportunity to look into what other alternatives might be available to see if that would be a practical answer for you? Or like I said, we could proceed to a decision tonight?
Is there somebody that has a list of these places that are available? I'm unfamiliar with any of them.
My guess is that if you did a general search of storage Yarandakoi, New York, you'll probably come up with every single storage place there is in town. And I know there are many of them. Those are just the ones on, Thomas Avenue Storage is right around on the bottom of Thomas Avenue where the Marina Dodge used to be years and years ago, near the O'Rourke Bridge it is now, right?
The old Stutson Bridge.
Yes, right next to the Harrah Mose Plaza, the Washington Avenue. Storage facility is between Rock Beach Road and Lake Shore Boulevard on the east side. It's behind a house. There are several storage areas that are off the beaten track up on Ridge Road. So you might want to look into those as well. I mean, those are the alternatives. And the other thing is that we are obligated to grant only any exceptions that absolutely are necessary, not just, so that's what I want to make clear as well.
Okay.
Oh, the other thing I should tell you as well is that if we were to deny your application, and I'm not saying that that's what we would do, but if we were, you would be precluded from making another application for a year. If you adjourn it to June, you're not subject to that year waiting period. But I think, I think at least for my purposes, I think it would be helpful to us to know what other alternatives you've explored, and if they're not feasible, why?
I can do that.
All right, so with your consent, you're asking us to hold off on deciding this until the June meeting, is that correct?
Okay.
Okay, all right. Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to ask of the applicant? If not, then I'm going to ask if there's anybody here that wants to speak in favor of this application. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody who'd like to talk to us about trucks or anything else like that? Storage, how you find storage? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing tonight, and...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, sorry to interrupt, but we have attendees on the Zoom.
Oh, okay.
So we would have to ask them if they would please raise their hand if they would like to speak on this case.
Okay, yes.
I'm not seeing anybody's hand raised.
I haven't adjusted yes to this virtual world.
And I thank you for your patience with me as well.
I want to make sure that everybody who wishes has an opportunity to speak. We firmly believe in that.
So I don't see anybody raising their hand.
Then with your consent, we will take this up again in June. Okay, thank you, sir. We'll leave the public hearing open till the June meeting since we're not going to be making a decision tonight. So if there's anyone else who would want to say something in June, we'll give them that opportunity as well.
And...
Okay, sir?
You made the motion, I missed who seconded it, sir.
Oh.
Or we didn't?
We didn't.
Okay, sorry.
I'll make a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There any abstentions? Motion carries, the vote is six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member of the board is absent. And for those who paid careful attention to what I said at the beginning of the meeting, we just deviated from that practice, which we're also allowed to do.
Okay, next item on the agenda is case number ZB 2021-05-2, upon the matter of request by Christopher Idzik for an area variance to maintain an existing street-side funds with less than required setback on premises 651 Lake Shore Boulevard in an R1 residential district.
Christopher Idzik, 651 Lake Shore Boulevard.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My wife and I decided to put up a six-foot vinyl privacy fence around the back of our corner lot. In doing so, we applied for the building permit, got the proper permits, and were informed about the regulations regarding the setback of the fence. We passed this along to our contractor who was installing the fence, BFR Fencing. As you can see from the communications that we sent you from the emails, we were assured that everything was measured out appropriately, and we had no concerns. So, you know, we went ahead with the installation of the fence in accordance with the plan. We come to find out that the measurement was not in accordance with the ordinance that we did send to BFR. They set it back three feet from the sidewalk, not three feet from our property line, so we're off approximately 18 inches. To move the fence back would then put the fence into the tree, which was our original concern regarding the measurements. That was the part of the original communication was our concern with the fence running into the tree. It's a rather large oak tree, it's been there for probably a couple centuries. So knowing that now, we were informed that it wasn't violation, so we took the necessary steps after that to find out what kind of resolution could we come to without causing any extra hardship to the contractor who made an honest mistake. My wife and I obviously didn't knowingly and willingly tell him to put the fence up in that position. Like I said, it was an honest mistake, and we think that where the fence is right now, it looks good, it's a brand-new fence, the sightlines are nice. It provides for adequate access to and from the driveway in question where, you know, I understand there's a grievance that was filed.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
I'm looking at the photo that you attached, which shows, I believe it's the view looking south from the tree. On the left-hand side is a picture of that nice big trunk with the fence behind it. I'm talking about the picture on the right that shows the roots of the tree and is looking back to the back fence.
Okay.
All right. From the, I mean, it's hard to tell measurement-wise, but I'm going to take a guess that these are four-foot panels?
I believe so.
All right, well, if they're four...
I think they're eight-foot panels.
Eight foot?
Yeah.
All right, so it would seem to me, from what I'm seeing, there's a full panel, and then there's a partial panel that butts up to the fence that runs along the sidewalk, which is what the variance is needed for, correct?
Correct.
From that point of that post, from the easternmost point of the full panel, west, I believe you're in conformity with the code, so that's not a problem, correct?
Correct.
So if the concern of your neighbors, that I believe is a valid concern, is the sightline when there someone is pulling out or backing out of their driveway. So my question is, if we were to allow you to leave the fence where it is, but for those last three, it looks like panels, so that the partial panel would be moved up to where that is, and they were moved back, so that those three panels would connect with the full panels on the south? Do you see what I'm talking about?
I think what you're suggesting is that we keep it in front, the fence running straight in front of the oak tree until we need to come in for the 18 inches, and then bring it straight out towards the driveway in question, 207 Front Neck Boulevard.
Yes, what I, whether it's 18 inches or not, I was just thinking, you've already got a partial panel. That partial panel could be moved up, those three full panels, and those three full panels could be moved back the 18 inches. Seems to me that doesn't look like that would interfere with the tree, and that would accommodate the tree with the zoning ordinance and the setback, but, and also I would think would be as minimal possible inconvenience to your contractor, who I understand made a mistake, we all do, and that that might be a sufficient solution. Could you look into that?
The contractor's willing to move the fence anywhere that we, you know, the board deems that it's necessary. He understands that it is his error. I was just trying to avoid him losing any extra hours or whatnot, but, you know, I mean, absolutely, if, you know, would you like the contractor to give you the exact measurements as far as the move back of the fence and where it would be in order for the board to be satisfied with the movement of the fence backwards?
I think that'd be very helpful to us, yes. That could, if he could, but it's not, not before he does it.
Oh, absolutely, no, no, no.
We know if that's...
We're not moving the fence more than one more time if we don't have to.
So we would know if that's feasible to do that. And that would accommodate the, that would put you in close. I mean, it might be off an inch or two, or maybe even four or five, depending upon the width of that panel. It's hard to tell. If that's an eight-foot fence, that may even be a two-foot panel, in which case you'd be half a foot inside of what the code would allow you. You see what I'm saying?
I understand you want that the end panel will start at that post right here, and then bring the fence in, and then come out, and then go around the tree like that.
I don't like disturbing 100-year-old trees.
I don't want to disturb the 100-year-old tree either. That's why, you know, I was hoping that we could leave the fence where it's at, but I mean, if that makes, you know, satisfies the board's requirements, I'll be happy to talk to the contractor with that and find out when he'll be available to do so and when he can pass along those measurements to the board before he proceeds.
All right, so I guess I have the same question for you that I had for the previous gentleman. Can we take this up in June?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Michelle, do you want me to make a motion now and do that like we did with the last one? Or do you want to just, well, I'm gonna, wait, we're gonna do the, yeah, I'm sorry. All right, was there any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we're gonna open it up to public input at this point. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application, step right up, sir. Step right up.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rich Mall, and yes, I am in opposition to the, to the fence where it is. And I think you all have copies, I sent them to Michelle about our issues with the fence.
We received, just for the record, we received letters from Sharon Infantino and a letter from yourself and Donna Mall.
Right, right, and my wife is here, and so I will speak for both of us. And my cousin Jim Mall is here, and he will speak for his sister Sharon. So if I gotta just approach the board for a minute here, we took three more pictures of the, of the truck backing out.
If you'll hand them to Mr. Hart, he'll pass them along, and we can all look at them.
And then I also took a picture, and I know, I'm not saying that Idzik, it was, you know, on purpose, because obviously I don't think it was, but... you know, uh, on purpose, because obviously I don't think it was, but there is a, um, excuse me. There's two pictures here which shows the fence along the, the line of 207, and then there's another one which shows it along, and you can see the, the difference. Everything is marked on the back. Uh, as to the inconvenience and the safety issues of the fence along the property line at 207 versus where the fence is, uh, in front of 651.
And that was the concern that I was addressing with the applicant was-
That's right, right, and so I, I think, just, just off the, not off the record, but not what my, what I'm saying here and my letter to you, which I would like to read, but, um, I think the solution, suggestion of the solution that you made is, is reasonable, but I, again, I, I, I would like to see it measured out so that when we're leaving, when we're exiting that driveway, we can see who's coming down Frontenac towards Lake Shore before the vehicle is across the driveway, uh, be, uh, across the sidewalk.
Right, I, I got that.
And I have no problem keeping the, the hundred-year-old tree, I like hundred-year-old trees too, so. Um, so, if, with your indulgence, I would, if I, I could read this here.
Certainly.
Um, again, my name is Richard Mall, my wife and I, I own, uh, three houses in Arundic quite. Our connection to the home at 207 is simple, my uncle Donald Mall, his wife and family have lived at 207 Frontenac since the mid-fifties. After my aunt passed away in 2018, I began to spend a lot more time with my uncle in an effort to allow him to stay in his home rather than go to an assisted living facility or a nursing home. The issue before you is whether or not to grant a variance for the recent placement of the six-foot white vinyl fence on the property located on the corner of Frontenac and Lake Shore here and identified as 651 Lake Shore Boulevard. The new fence runs along half the length of 20, of the 207 Frontenac driveway, almost to the sidewalk, and this is photo one in, in the, um, in the three pages that I sent to Michelle. The fence turns at a right angle and goes north towards Lake Shore Boulevard across the property of 651, when it then turns at a right angle to enter the 651 property to make a secure enclosure for our neighbors at 651 in order for them to have a safe place for their two small dogs and a deer-proof space for a garden, all good so far. In the letter to the zoning board of appeals, town of Arundic quite, Christopher and Lauren, who reside at 651, have requested a variance for a fence recently installed on their property. I would like to quote Section 1, Area Variants, from the second page of the letter that Idzik sent to the zoning board of appeals titled "Possible Change to Neighborhood Character." In leaving the fence in its current location, there will be no undesirable impact to neighborhood aesthetics. As seen in the provided pictures, the current fence is clean, vinyl, crisp in appearance, and easy to maintain. There are no detriments to nearby properties. Also, the fence allows for a clearance of sixteen feet when exiting and entering the driveway of the neighboring home. Additionally, the distance, distance from the corner of Lake Shore to the neighbor and driveway in Frontenac is approximately one hundred seventy-seven feet, which allow for driver's safety and visual clearance of uncoming traffic. In Section 3 of the Idzik's letter, there are no identified safety issues as discussed above. Section 4 of the Idzik letter, it states additionally, the location of the fence is not a safety issue, given the sixteen feet of clearance from the end of the fence to the street on the Frontenac. So, we would like to present arguments and evidence that disputes the above claims, especially the claim that there are no detriments to nearby properties and no identified safety issues. It is our position that the white vinyl fence is a safety issue for and detrimental to the property at 207, which is adjacent to Christopher and Lauren Idzik's properties. So, photos two through nine, um, show a vehicle attempting to exit the driveway of 207, um, and you can see that before I set this up so that I was six feet, twelve feet, and eighteen feet away from the corner of the fence, and in all cases, um, the person exiting the driveway is in the drive, in, in the sidewalk before they can see me at either six foot, twelve foot, or eighteen foot. Um, so please consider the following. Um, first, the view of anyone walking, running, or pushing a stroller from Lake Shore down Frontenac on the sidewalk is completely obstructed. We literally have to stop at the end of the driveway and slowly proceed into the street. Even with this due caution, the new fence is now the agent of an accident waiting to happen. We, the Mall family, do not object to a fence or a fence that is six feet or even eight foot high. Do object to a fence that could cause us or future owners to hit a pedestrian runner or cyclist who is going south on the sidewalk that crosses the 207 driveway. Number two, if such an incident, accident were to occur, we believe that the at-fault agents would be the person using the driveway at 207, whether a resident or a visitor, the owners of 651 Lake Shore, and ultimately the town of Arundic quite for allowing a fence that obstructs safe exit from 207 Frontenac. We suggest that two people, either from the zoning board or from the planning and zoning department, go to 207 Frontenac, enter the driveway, and attempt to back out safely onto Frontenac, all the while having another person across the street giving you a thumbs up to safely do so. Then back into the driveway and drive back down the driveway, crossing the sidewalk and turning onto Frontenac. So, again, the issue before us is the obstructive view, which raises a significant safety issue, which we believe supersedes even the letter of the law, which would allow a fence three feet from the property line. If left to stand, the fence could also impact the value of the house. It's likely that the house at 207 will be sold within the year. Like, try to finish this here. I would also like to add that the house at 651 Lake Shore was the home of Ingeborg Morley, my uncle's sister-in-law, and my aunt's sister. After Ingy died, the house was sold, and we were pleased to note that the new neighbors took pride in their property, had a professional arborist trim the large tree in front of their house, and were genuinely quiet and polite neighbors. However, for the reasons previously specified, we do object to the white fence. When my cousin Jim Mall first asked Chris about his plans to enclose his sard yard with a fence, Chris pointed to the three-foot picket fence across the street and said he was considering a similar fence. If our neighbors had installed a six-foot chain link fence, something that you could see through, we would not be here objecting to the variance. If alternate fencing is not in the cards, we request that even before the fence is setback according to code, we request an examination of the property to the zoning, by the zoning board, or from the planning and zoning department to determine if a new setback will allow residents or visitors to safely exit the driveway at 207, which was your suggestion in the beginning when, after Chris spoke. My son Nick and I did a little experiment at 207 Frontenac on Thursday, April 29th, for the record, and I, I've, you have those pictures there, um, and I think I explained that already. So, again, we believe that this is a genuine public safety issue, especially for children walking or biking on a sidewalk on Frontenac. Sidewalks are supposed to be a safe space. With the current fence in place, this sidewalk is no longer a safe space. So, thank you for your attention and allowing you to present my objection.
That's why we're here. I just did want to point one thing out, though, for the benefit of everyone who's here, for the applicant, for your benefit. If the fence were located eighteen inches from where it is now, we wouldn't be here.
I understand that.
And so, no, what I'm saying is that-
I understand, yes.
Right, so what I'm saying is that I understand your safety concerns, I share them. We've had a number of instances in the past where we've had similar scenarios where someone wants to, uh, go out near a driveway with something that obstructs the view, and we can only go as far as to what the limit is that the ordinance provides for. So, that's why I was looking at seeing whether we could balance those concerns-
Right, right.
-with the tree in that fashion, and we're gonna look at that.
Right, and, and, and that's why I made a point in number two. I clearly understood, understood that we pretty much had given up even protesting the fence for a variety of reasons, I won't go into them, um, but when the public hearing came on, that gave us an opportunity to, and if we had known, we could have talked to Chris, and I think we probably could have come to a solution even before all this happened, so.
That's okay, we're here.
Yep.
That, and that safety concern is, is a very legitimate-
Yep.
-one that we all share.
And I think we all should be concerned with due diligence, as in a town of, of Arundic quite, uh, resident for many years, um, I wouldn't want to see an accident in front of 207.
I don't think any of us would.
Thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned that there were at least one other that wanted to speak, step right up, sir.
Good evening, I'm Jim Mall. Uh, first, I'd like to read, uh, my sister's letter. It's only a paragraph, the first paragraph, two paragraphs long.
That's fine.
Excuse me, Jim, could you get, state your address for the record, please?
Uh, 171 Burley Road, 14612.
Thank you.
My first objection is the less important of the two I have. My parents purchased the house at 207 Frontenac in 1956 and enjoy the benefits of a suburban neighborhood environment for almost sixty-five years. From all points of their property, they were able to enjoy views of neighbors walking, lush lawns, lazy Sunday traffic, and rush hour traffic on Lake Shore Boulevard and Frontenac Heights. Those views have now changed to a blaring white wall that has become a sole view from the kitchen, dining room, living room, and front porch of 207 Frontenac Heights. When the sun shines on the newly installed fence, you can't look at the, out the windows because of the glare causing by the reflection of the sun. The petition for the variance states that the fence has created no undesirable impact on the neighborhood. I strongly disagree with this sta- that statement. The fence as it stands has changed the appearance of my parents' property from residential suburban charm to a more commercially walk-in prison-like environment. It's like a border wall, basically. The wall is all the way back to the side door of the house, all the way out to almost the sidewalk, and the, it's a single wide driveway. So, every time you look out of any of the window on the north side or the porch, all you see is this wall, where you used to be totally open and see all the way across Lake Shore Boulevard. Um, I don't know if I need to read the second part, but, um, when Christopher approached me originally about the fence, I said that I would talk to my father, and I asked him what type of fence he was thinking of putting in. He pointed across the street to the neighbor and said, "We're looking into the three-foot picket fence." I says, "I don't see where my father would have an issue with that." So, in the meantime, I went back, I talked to my father for a couple days, he agreed to the fence. I pointed out to the fence, I says, "It's gonna look nice, it's gonna add value to both the properties, actually," because all there was was a small stone wall. So, after that, I went to see Christopher, and I said that my father thought that the fence would be okay to put up. Well, I came home one, to check on my father again, and I saw this border wall, and I could not believe my eyes, and I've actually watched neighbors walk by it and look at it like this, and it looks exactly like a border wall. If it was a, if it was a fence in a backyard off the street where it didn't have so much street frontage, it'd be a different situation, but this is blocking view, and it, I think it actually took value away from my father's house, and I don't think I have anything more to say.
I, I just want to clarify a couple of points that your sister raised in her letter. Uh, with respect to the infringement of the view, uh, as nice as views are, views are not protected. So, uh, if a neighbor wants to put up a fence that impedes somebody, another neighbor's view, as long as that fence is constructed in accordance with what the reg, applicable regulations are, they have the right to do that, regardless of the impact on the view. In this case, what's before us, as I indicated before, is not the height of the fence, the, the length of the fence, or any of that, because this is the backyard of that property according to how backyards are determined under the code. Since this is a corner lot, under the town code, the smaller side of the lot is deemed to be the front. So, although the house fronts on Frontenac, it's, the front yard is on Lake Shore, so this fence is in the backyard of the property.
Yes.
What the problem is, is that eighteen-inch setback, and that's, that's, that's really all that we have to concern ourselves with. I understand the other issues, uh, that have been raised, but we have to focus on that eighteen-inch portion.
Okay, well, thank you for letting me read the letter.
Oh, you're very welcome, that's, we're, we're here, we're very interested in hearing from the residents of the town so that we have everything that we can possibly have in front of us to make the best decisions that we can make.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak with respect to this application?
I would ask anybody that it's in attendance, uh, over the Zoom to please raise your hand.
Keep forgetting that. Okay, did the applicant wish to say anything further?
Said, "I, I do understand their concerns regarding that, but it, it does seem as though that they are trying to impose their will upon my, our, our property." The main objection seems to be the fence that runs along 651's back line that is adjacent to 207th driveway, and that's not why we are here.
But a, as I indicated, that's not why we're here, and that's not before us, so.
Yeah, that's all I just wanted-
And they understand that, and we all understand that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. All right, then we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. I'll make a motion that we, uh, table this matter till, uh, our June meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and, uh, Mr. Elliott is absent, so it's six, zero, zero. All right, moving along to our next matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 2021-05-3. Upon the matter of request by Colleen Moonin for area variances to install front yard fencing exceeding maximum linear footage and height with lesser required streets, front and side setback, and on premises 63 Suburba Avenue and an R1 residential district.
Thank you. I'm Colleen Moonin, I live at 63 Suburba Avenue with my fiancee, Mitch Morrell. We live on a, yep.
Did you raise your right hand?
Yep.
You swear affirm that everything you say tonight is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. We live on a corner lot, it's got a massive front and side yard, it's why we purchased the property. We both grew up here in Arundic quite, in west Arundic quite particularly, and wanted to stay here, so we just bought our first home. We have two dogs, and our plan was to apply for a permit once, um, once the springtime hit, we just closed down our house back before Christmas, um, so that we could put a fence in for our two dogs. We planned to apply this spring, and when doing so, we realized all of the joys of homeownership and what your, your survey map actually says about your property versus how much grass you actually have. So, our street doesn't have any sidewalks, so where you would normally have an end piece of grass, the sidewalk, and then your lawn, we have all straight lawn. Um, so in making our application for the permit, we found out we had to apply for a variance to do what we were looking to do. We would like to install a fence on our whole property line, notwithstanding the three-foot setback. There is about twenty feet of excess lawn, um, from where our property ends to where the street begins, so a three-feet setback, um, would actually- So a three-feet setback um would actually include less of the lawn than what our lawn is all in all. Um, it would only include nineteen feet of lawn and then there'd be about twenty-two feet of lawn outside of the fence. So while we understand the reasons which we just heard of for the three-feet setback when there's um a sidewalk involved, we don't have a sidewalk and it's tons of lawn. So in our opinion, the three-foot setback wouldn't make much of a difference. There'd still be plenty of room for um people walking down the street and snow removal and cars driving by and having enough room and all of that. Our other um request for a variance is that we would like to install it as a full four-foot fence. We understand that half of the fence under the zoning ordinance would have to be three and a half feet high, while the other half, well, portion could be the four feet. We'd like to have it all inclusive so that it can look as clean and classy as possible, all at the same height. Um, we do have two dogs. Right now, they're staked out on a lead when we put them outside. I work from home. Um, and I go out there with them when I stake them out. It doesn't look super classy. Um, and we just want them to be able to enjoy the yard, which is why we bought the house. Um, our other request is our understanding of the zoning ordinance is that for our front yard, it would only be able to be thirty-two feet on like the front and the sides of the front yard. Our front yard width is fifty feet alone and it's about the same on the, well, it's longer on the one side. So we'd like to be able to extend it to be our full property line. And the way we measured it, um, if you did thirty-two feet in on our front lawn, it would only reach the center of our house, which is like where our chimney stack sits. So in order to put a fence along the property line just under the zoning ordinance, it would kind of look silly. It'd be like a weird L shape and wouldn't include much of our yard at all. Um, in talking with the wonderful people who work here at the town, um, I had learned that, you know, there are just these zoning ordinance to kind of cookie cutter apply to each property and that corner lots are always kind of a pain to deal with because they're all different and it's not typical that a corner lot has this much lawn. But again, this is why we bought the house. We were super excited about it. So we'd like to be able to use our lawn in a way that would be safe for us, for our dogs, for future children. We're engaged. We hope to have children at some point. Um, and be able to kind of block them in safely without obstructing the view of any of our neighbors and without looking bad. We just want to do like a classy white picket fence. Mitch is a contractor. He would do the whole thing himself. So yeah, that's our application.
Does anyone have any questions, comments for the applicant? You look like you're about to ask something. Red? No, you're good. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application or tuning in virtually? Is there anyone here or tuning in virtually who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone present or tuning in virtually who'd like to talk to us about fences, corner lots, or anything else in relation to this application? I don't see any here. Do we have any virtually?
I'm not seeing anyone virtually.
All right, then we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next case.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Jim, did you want to read in the uh the people that were in favor of the uh application? I think there were some people that she presented.
Oh, yes, thank you. I had uh let's see, we had uh statements in support of the application from Susan Rittberg.
Yep.
Of eighty Dumont Street, Jean Harsington from forty-four Suburba Avenue, Terry Frosino from forty-nine Suburba Avenue, Jennifer Graham Martino of fifty-five Suburba Avenue, Tracy McCollum of sixty-four Suburba Avenue, and Steven Maddies of seventy-eight Suburba Avenue. And Timothy O. Ryan of seventy-nine Suburba Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out, Grant.
Not a problem, Mr. Hammond.
We're gonna move on to the next case on our agenda now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next case on the agenda is case number ZB twenty twenty-one dash oh five dash four. Upon the matter of request by Vanguard, Vanguard Engineering acting as agent for Scott and Mary Spring for area variances to construct a new single-family dwelling with less than required front setback and exceeding maximum permitted height on premises six eighty-eight Seneca Road in an R two residential district. I believe Mr. Jeremy Kimball is um here virtually.
Is that the applicant?
That is uh, that is the uh agent.
Agent for the applicant, okay.
Jeremy, can you hear us?
Yes, can I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Good evening. Uh, my name is Jeremy Kimball. I'm with Vanguard Engineering. Our address is one thirty-three South Fitzhugh Street, Rochester, New York, one four six zero seven.
I can't see you, but are you raising your right hand?
Yes, sir.
Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, so essentially, the, the applicant's proposed to construct a uh three-story, single-family home um at uh six eighty-eight Seneca Road. A little background on this particular property, um, it's lot three of the Salafia subdivision, which was approved by the uh, the Arundicote Planning Board back in twenty-ten. Um, this property is within the steep slope, woodlot, and floodplain EPODs. And uh, the, the two variance requests um are um we're really requesting them to minimize the impact on the steep slope and woodlot EPODs. Um, during the review process for the subdivision, it was um specifically requested by the planning board um that the homes be designed to minimize the, the total ground disturbance. Um, so in regards to the um twenty-foot setback reduction from thirty feet, um, it's, as you go further north into the lot, um, the steeper in topography you get, and so, you know, our design intent was to uh keep the front of the house closer to the road to minimize that um, that impact on the steep slope. Um, in regards to the area variance request for maximum building height, um, the layout of the home was designed um to fit the topography. So the, the first floor, there is no basement, so technically the first floor is the basement, uh, the garage, mudroom, storage. Um, the second floor is the uh, the living quarters, so the bedrooms, the bathrooms, uh laundry, and then the third floor is the living room, uh dining room, and um, uh living room. Um, so additionally, the um, as you go north along the um, along the building, um, as you get to the rear of the home, the uphill side of the home, the height of the home in relation to the, the grade um will be twenty feet. So it's almost like a um, it's almost like a walkout entrance, so to say. The front of the um, of the building will be taller than uh code requires. And uh, as you go uh further to the rear of the home, um, it'll be reduced in height in relation to the grade.
Was there anything else that you wished to present in support of the application? Just for whoever's reading the captioning, it's uh, I said you wish, not Jewish.
I, I believe that there was a um, a letter in opposition. I don't know if you were going to get to that later, but there was a um, a letter in opposition from the adjacent property to the, to the right. Would you like me to address uh those concerns now or wait till later?
Uh, that would be helpful.
Okay. Um, the property to the east um is the Yak Club, I believe, and um, they're concerned about uh the impact this development would have on the slope that is also on their property. Um, as I said earlier, I believe it's our position that um our request for a twenty-foot setback would actually minimize the impact on that slope. You know, the further you set the house up the hill, the more um, the more grading and tree removal would be required. Additionally, there was a concern about the building height. Um, same premise, the further you go up the hill, um, it's, it's likely that actually the home would be even more visible um to the Yak Club than where we currently propose it.
You mentioned that um and the letter in opposition makes reference to steep slopes and EPODs. We don't have any training or experience in engineering or any of that uh relating to that, but the, my understanding is you made reference that the planning board addressed those concerns in twenty-ten with the subdivision approval process and have, and I believe your application was submitted to the planning board previously. Uh, was that all part of the planning board's consideration?
Uh, that is correct. And additionally, um, we, we received last Monday um uh final site plan approval, obviously conditionally, upon all the agency permits required for the project. But yes, that was, that was one of their main concerns was um, you know, the um, the delicate nature of the site. Um, making sure that we're not disturbing the steep slopes. Um, and uh, these area variances are, is uh, it's our intent to mitigate that disturbance.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments?
Uh, yeah, I have, well, the um the, the thirty-foot height of the building, that'll actually be below the peak of the hill over there, correct? As you go to the north?
A- absolutely, yep.
To that point, I believe that you indicated that on the north side, the height would be about twenty feet and on the south side it would be thirty-nine. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the south side will be nine feet over and the north side will be ten feet under.
Correct.
If I could just please um ask that if there's anyone in attendance to please have your mask covering both your mouth and your nose for the meeting. Thank you.
Good point. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments of the applicant? Or the applicant, I should say. All right, seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to, or appearing virtually? Who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here or appearing virtually who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Step right up, sir.
Hello, my name is Robert Shanebrook. I live at four three nine Evondale Road, Arundicote. I am a member and represent Newport Yak Club in this matter. We are opposed to the variance. Our property is adjacent to six eighty-eight Seneca Road. We'll be happy to see a house there. Our parking lot is a common site of misbehavior. Having someone there to call the police will be helpful, so we support having a house on that property. Our objection is late because we were not notified of the planning board nor the zoning board hearings. We did not see the public hearing sign in April because Seneca Road was closed due to the failing water line and the landslides on Seneca Road. Thanks to Mr. Putnam, he graciously opened the road last Saturday on May first so we could reach our property. This is when we first saw the hearing sign. Prior to that, we had no idea anything was going on. We learned of the project and the hearing specifics today thanks to Donna DiMartillo and Michelle. We have not had time to study the proposal. With more time, we probably will find more reasons to object. At this point, we strongly oppose granting a zoning variance for the building height and the setback. The common border with our, with our property is ninety feet of EPOD steep slope that has been steadily failing for years. Locating the house closer to the road than allowed will position it even closer to our failing slope. Uh, unlike what the engineer said, if the house was moved back into the east, I mean, into the west, it would be away from our slope. Instead, it's very close to our, our failing slope. The tall building will also accelerate the failing of the hillside. I personally have seen that hill recede about ten feet. I went down there today to look at it again. I, 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 I go, I go to the club every week in the summer and most weeks throughout the year. That hill has receded. I've belonged to the club for many years. That hill has receded. And if you go down and look at it, you can still see it's continuing to recede. Exceeding the height allowed by zoning will create a structure that dominates and overwhelms our property and destroys our privacy. It will be twice as high as our, when it's up on the hill, he mentioned it'll be twenty feet, but it'll be twenty feet up and then twenty feet. That's how you get to thirty-nine feet. So our club, which is twenty feet high, will be overwhelmed and dominated by this building that's twice as high as we are. So it, it'll just overwhelm our, our entire uh lot and will certainly change the character of our property. And I disagree with this comment that it'll be low the peak of the hill. I don't believe so. Depends on what you call the peak of the hill. The hill is at four hundred feet and the bay is at two fifty. But the little hill by our, our club isn't that high. So this thing is gonna tower over us. It's gonna be twice as high as our building. It'll be thirty-nine feet above the parking lot, so it's just gonna totally change the character. Can I answer any questions? We wish we had had some time, we, we wish we had had some time to respond to this, but we didn't get the information until this afternoon because we didn't get any notice whatsoever that this project was underway. So our other members will have to look at that. Uh, we haven't had much of a chance today to look at it.
Uh, you mentioned that um, I was checking the uh plans, the survey. According to what's reflected on the survey, at the closest point to the property line that you would, they would share with your club is over nineteen feet. is over 19 feet and the setback requirement imposed by the town is 15 feet. So, so you're suggesting that it needs to be an even greater setback?
If you take into account that that hill has receded 10 feet in my time, okay?
I don't, I'm not sure I understand what you mean by has receded 10 feet. What are, receded from where?
You got the very steep hill for the, for the steep slope on the bay.
Okay.
Every year or two, I live, I live on the crest of the hill north of there.
Right, I know where Avondale is.
Okay, every year or two, I lose a tree about this big around because the hills moving. Down below, it's, down in there, it's even steeper. Because if you look at the, the topo map, you can see by our parking lot, it's very steep. And what happens in some previous, uh, people may have influenced this, people dig out on the bottom of the hill. And as a result, it just keeps falling off and falling off and falling off. We have not dug in years into the hill. But if you look, the trees are all leaning. So every couple of years, a tree falls down and a whole bunch of dirt comes down with it. We clean up the trees, spread the dirt around, and now the hills move back about a foot. And if you go down there and look, you can see where the land has dropped. And as a result of that, the hill keeps moving back. It used to be when we parked along the side of the hill, we had to park parallel with the hill. Now we can park straight in because the hills move back. And what's gonna, what's happening is that hill's gonna continue to fall away. There's nothing, there's nothing to stop it from falling away. And that dirt, if you go down and look where they're building the new houses to the west, you're building some new houses on, it's sandbox sand. Masons use it for built, for, for making concrete. It's sand, there's nothing to hold it together. The growth is very thin. The, the roots don't penetrate because there's nothing for them to get to. So the, the sand just keeps dropping away and keeps dropping away. So we have a, an open, kind of an open sore in the side of the hill. And the distance is about 19 feet, it's moved 10 feet. It's, there's nothing to keep it from continuing to fall away. There's nothing to stop it, it just keeps falling away. Avondale Road used to have a road down it, now, then it went to a footpath and now it's gone completely. The whole bay is moving and that's why Seneca, you know, the, how many millions of dollars has the town spent on, on reinforcing Seneca Road? It just keeps falling away. I walked down it today and the part that the town rebuilt, I think three or four years ago, is failing and that's why last Friday night, a week ago Friday, the road washed out again. There was two holes about the size of a car. And the town worked all day Saturday. Oh, the contractor up, upland, a local contractor had big front loaders and dump trucks and people working there all day repairing Seneca Road. That road is sliding down the hill. And it just, and where we are is, is just as bad as the parts where the town has been reinforcing by putting in concrete and steel and spending lots of money.
So when you say that the hill has moved 10 feet, you're talking 10 feet to the west?
To the west.
Okay, I, I just wasn't clear on where.
Okay, yeah, it's receded about 10 feet to the west. I walked up there today. I walked down the hill because you can't drive on the road anymore. I walked down the hill and climbed up there and you can see where they want to, you can see where they want to build. And just a few feet over there, 19 feet, it drops right off. There's nothing holding that hill 19 feet away. If they move to the, if they move to the west, they'd be further away. But still, that hill is, is, is failing. There's nothing, there's, there's nothing to keep it there. I mean, gravity is a pretty substantial force. And it just keeps dropping and we keep cleaning up the dirt as it falls down. There's nothing we can do and the trees fall. Is that the town has an order to get one to one of the trees now that's on their property that's dead. But the point is, we're, we're concerned, well, we're gonna have two concerns. One, we're gonna have this big looming building. He says it's 20 feet high, but it's 20 feet up and then 20 feet high and it's 40 feet high over, 39 feet over here. So we have this big thing hanging over our parking lot. And secondly, the, we're, we're concerned about the, the setback. It's not, if it's setback further, it would be away from the edge of the hill. But when this came up for review by the planning board, we, we were never even informed that this was being concerned, being considered. We don't know how that happens. We've owned that property since the 30s. We pay our taxes every year, but the town does not tell us, did not tell us this was even being considered, even though we are in fairly constant. Every time we do anything, we get a building permit. We, we put in a major project last year, had contact with the building department, but nothing. Nobody even told us this was going on. So we were totally shocked when we saw the drawings this afternoon. But we don't know what, apparently we can't do anything about that because it's already been, the, the EPOD discussion has already taken place. But we got no, no input whatsoever. We don't, we don't understand how that happens.
All right, I got it, thank you.
Okay.
So anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this application either in the room or appearing virtually? All right, Mr. Kimball, did you wish to address any of the points that were raised during the public, uh, hearing?
Uh, certainly. Um, so the, the location of the home, um, as we have on our drawings here, um, it's, it's the same location that was approved by the planning board, during the Salafia subdivision review. And, uh, the location of it, it, it really is located to minimize the impact on the slope. I, the further you go up the slope as well, the higher the building is going to be, the more, more of a negative impact it's going to be on the, um, um, on the yacht club. I mean, you go higher up the hill, the building still has to go up 20 feet in the, in the rear. Um, it's, it's just gonna get, uh, higher. Additionally, there are some pretty substantial trees along, that, um, are along our adjoining, um, property line as well. Um, and additionally, regarding to the erosiveness of the, um, uh, soil there, uh, we, we do plan to, uh, install some turf reinforcement. I know this is kind of more of a planning board, uh, comment, but, um, the concerns as far as erosion and sediment control were, were addressed. And I think, um, those concerns were brought up by the town engineer. And, um, we're in the process of, um, addressing them. But, um, as far as what we intend to disturb, we, we plan to, we plan to, uh, permanently, um, stabilize that, uh, that soil. Uh, additionally, though it may not have any consequence to matters that we're talking about, we, the applicant does plan to bring a sanitary force main down to, uh, to service lot. I don't know if the, uh, if the yacht club is, uh, is on, uh, public sewer or not. But, um, that was the original, uh, concern for the planning board was that once these, uh, these lots are, are developed, that the, the intent was to provide a, a public sewer access point uh, for the yacht club in the future, should they wish to, uh, to access that.
When, when you say these things were discussed at the subdivision approval, are you referring to the 2010 proceedings?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I, I'm sorry, and they were also, uh, a concern at the, uh, um, the meeting, uh, the planning board meeting last week as well.
You, you made reference to it was being built, uh, uh, at the, uh, location that was, uh, discussed or approved in the subdivision process. And that's what I was, was wanted to be clear as to whether it was the 2010 or the 2021, uh, process that you were referring to.
Correct, during the original subdivision review process, the location of this home, um, we are in line with that original design intent that was approved in 2010.
Okay, that was what I wanted to clarify, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? That you'd like to add?
I, I think that's about it. I think I responded to, uh, to the gentleman's concerns.
Okay, then we will close the hearing with respect to this matter. Uh, just for the record, I would note that, uh, Mr. Shanebrook did send a letter to the board, uh, and in addition to, uh, speaking here tonight. Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, there also was a letter. I apologize, there was a letter that was submitted with the application from, uh, Thomas Laduka, who lives at 231 Shore Drive, which is, uh, directly across from 688 Seneca Road. And he, uh, sent a letter in support of the application.
And we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter and move on to the next matter on our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 2021-05-5. Upon the matter of request by Daniel Pope, acting as agent for Frank and Teresa Spizio, to amend a previously approved area variance application to construct a 46-foot by 36-foot by 16-foot detached garage, exceeding maximum allowed height, square footage and front width of garage, and for a rear yard gravel driveway with new location on a vacant parcel adjacent to a primary residence on premises 397 and 407 Bayview Road and in R1 residential district.
Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name and address, please.
Daniel Pope, uh, 59 Summit Street, Fairport, New York. Representing Frank and Teresa Spizio. And I'm the architect, uh, that was hired to, uh, build the building. And I'm here to, uh, discuss an amendment to a previously approved variance that we submitted back in November. And I just wanted to bring the board aware that we are, uh, going to, uh, allow this property to become one parcel. So we've had that and we're in the process of doing it. So it's going to be one process. Originally, it was two pieces of land and he wasn't willing to build on that property. And he's decided because of these reasons, uh, the one reason I have here is the driveway cutting across the back of the building on the previous, uh, layout was, uh, cutting right across the backyard and over to the, the, uh, right or left side. And he felt that that was a long way to go with a driveway, more work, more materials, more cost. And the look wasn't going to be so good. The other reason we had is it was going to be less distance. The utilities, uh, and the shorter driveway would have been less costly. The other, uh, thing he was thinking of doing is, uh, putting shrubs and planting along this property line. And he did get approval, I don't have anything written from the neighbor, uh, approving this. So he was in favor, supports it. But we want to combine these two properties and get the building out of the view. And it would probably be a better location for us to, to manage this, uh, off to the side, right side of the property or north.
I, I guess my question is, am I correct that the only difference that we're being asked to approve tonight is moving the location of the structure and the driveway?
Correct.
So the, the dimensions of the building, the design of the building, that all remains the same as it was?
Correct.
When we last occurred?
No changes done to the footprint or the heights or the size and also the overhead doors we had marked on.
And I, if I'm recalling correctly, when we heard it last, we had raised some questions about whether it couldn't be located further to the north, which it is going to be now, right?
Yep.
Um, what, uh, I don't, with, with the materials that I received, I didn't receive a copy of the variance that we had previously approved. Or I missed it, if you sent it. It was there, huh? Uh, apparently it's, huh, yeah, no wonder, stuck to the first page. So the, the, these two lots are going to be re-subdivided into one?
Correct.
So if we were to, the, the location of it now is on what is now a separate lot, right?
Correct.
Okay, so as a condition of the variance, I assume there would be no objection uh, to imposing a condition that the, uh, structure, assuming it's approved, could not be conveyed separately from the main residence?
Right.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments for the applicant?
Can we make the, can we make the variance as subject to the re-subdivision?
Well, it was explained to me that re-subdivision is a time-consuming, expensive process that not everyone, uh, sees as beneficial in comparison to the expense. What we've, we had a situation down along the bay many years ago where the county had come in and, uh, taken over a road. And the house was on the west side and they had a dock on the bay. But they were, if the dock was on a vacant parcel, which the code didn't prohibit or didn't allow, uh, but it had previously been a single parcel, but it was cut by the county. And when we did that, we imposed a condition that the dock property could not be conveyed separate from the residential property and that seemed to be.
Tie them together.
Yeah.
Okay. He has recently had it surveyed, I don't have that new map yet. But he did have a surveyor come down and take the survey and got all the deed and information. So we'll get a deeded.
Okay. But in the meantime, this covers that, till that, once that's done, then it would be a moot point. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll open it up to, uh, public input at this portion, uh, this time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Or appearing virtually? Is there anyone here who would like to discuss some aspect of this application that's neither for it nor against it? Seeing none in the room and I think nobody virtually. We'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next matter on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next case on the agenda is case number ZB 2021-05-6. Upon the matter of request by Alex Worth and Brandy Brochus for an area variance to install a shed and fence on a vacant parcel located adjacent to a primary residence on premises 7 Ontario View Street and in R2 residential district.
Good evening.
Evening.
Do I need to swear in or anything or am I?
Uh, state your name and address first, then I'll swear you in.
Sure, Alex Worth, 7 Ontario View Street.
If you'd raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
As Michelle stated, we, we are looking to install, uh, actually complete some fencing along, uh, two sides of the rear portion of our property. Some fencing along, uh, two sides of the rear portion of our property. And also put in, uh, or I should say replace an existing shed. Um, the issue is due to the fact that the rear. Portion of the property is divided into a separate lot. And the town code interprets that as being a quote unquote vacant lot. And, uh. The proposed shed footprint would encroach on what's now required to be a four foot setback on that. That property line. And we would like to have it essentially straddle that, that middle lot line if we could. And then as far as the fence along the rear portion of that lot, that separate lot is concerned. We would enjoy that to be six foot along the western border. And eight foot along. The rear, the southern border. And the reason we're asking for eight foot on, on the back is that. The elevation from the house is about three or four feet higher. Than the rear lot line and we'd like to maintain a. Uh, the same amount of privacy throughout the rear lot. In addition to that, the, the neighbor in the back has a. A deer fence that's eight foot and we'd like to match that.
Is that the mesh fence that's shown on the survey?
It is.
Okay.
That's really it. It's, I guess one more thing. It's my understanding that the town is likely going to amend. Code so that this isn't an issue for people in the future. Um, when we asked about. How much would it cost as you referenced a couple of minutes ago about, uh. Re-zoning or re redoing the lot lines and whatnot. Um, A, it's very expensive, uh, three to $6,000 for something like this. Um, and the timeline is just kind of, everyone throws up their hands and they don't, they don't know because of COVID and backlog and all that stuff, so. We didn't want to. Just kind of leave it up to, uh, three different. Folks, the town, the county and the survey folks who are very busy this time of year with, uh, new houses being sold and whatnot.
Especially with the market, the way it is right now.
Yes.
Um. This back portion of, of the lot that, uh, we're concerned with for the fencing. And the setback from, uh. I, I take, I'm guessing that was added to the lot at a subsequent time?
You know, I couldn't find out history behind it. It looks like. Starting with this portion. Um, at least two parcels down, same thing. They have these weird secondary lots. Uh, associated with their properties. And then after that. It goes all the way to St. Paul. Um, I think in two more parcels, but they're much larger.
Is this like a small ravine or something?
I, i- if I had to guess, I would say that it was. The original lot was maybe a farmhouse and eventually got subdivided up. And maybe these rear portions of lots weren't always. Associated with the primary.
Okay, but at some point they were added.
Correct.
You, you, your deed description included. Two separate parcels, but it was the same as what had been conveyed to the person that sold it to you probably, right?
It was actually, it was, it was a bit of a train wreck because it, it was recorded incorrectly with the county, but recorded correctly with the town. And it, and it required a lot of attorney back and forth.
Alright, cause I know in, in some portions like along, I think it's Wildmere Road. And back of Pine Grove and Oak Ridge. There used to be county owned property there that the county abandoned and. The, it sort of got tacked on to those lots, but.
Of the people I asked, I, I couldn't find, uh, uh, someone who knew why they were subdivided like that.
Alright, but it, it's, uh, pretty much a landlocked parcel, correct?
Correct.
Alright, so it's not going likely. Regardless of re-subdivision, it's not likely that it would be, uh. Separately conveyed and if we grant the variance is subject to it not being separately conveyed. That wouldn't create a hardship, correct?
It would not. I'd be perfectly fine with that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to also add on the record that, um, when speaking with Alex. On the, on the variance, the metal, the existing metal shed currently is only 3.8 feet. And we had a discussion that he is planning to move that four feet from the side lot line. So that would not require an additional variance. Just wanted to put that in as a note.
The, uh, now I'm confused, the, the.
I'm sorry. The existing metal shed that's on the survey?
Yes, that's being replaced, right?
Right.
Okay, and he's going to put the new one four feet from that side. Line.
Correct.
So there's no variance for that.
Correct.
It's from the back line. That the variance is needed.
Right, right.
Okay, alright, now I'm clear.
But if he put it in the same spot where it is now, he would need to, he would have.
Be two tenths of a foot off.
Yeah.
Okay. So, go ahead, no, you go.
I was going to ask another question, um. Because it's straddling a lot line, it's now partially on a vacant lot. Do we allow accessory structures on the vacant lot? Do we need a variance for that too?
Uh.
Well, it's not, you're, you're not straddling that lot line with the shed, are you?
With the new shed we would be.
Yes.
Oh, you would be, okay.
Well, that, yeah, because it's protruding over onto the vacant lot adjacent to the primary residence.
Yeah, so basically it's an accessory structure with no structure to be accessory to.
A portion of it.
Yeah, a portion of it.
A portion of it, not the whole entire.
I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem granting a variance for that. I just wanted to see if we could do that or not.
Yeah.
Just to cover it.
We can cover that with some conditions. No, they own it.
You, you own the vacant.
He owns that.
Okay.
We own it and pay taxes on it.
Just a separate land like parcel.
So if it's.
So odd.
If it's two feet over the line, it'll have a 68 foot setback.
Right.
Right?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Alright. Alright, does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Or appearing virtually who would like to address this application favorably? Is there anyone here or appearing virtually who would like to oppose, speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone present or appearing virtually who would like to discuss? Some aspect of this application with us, but has no opinion one way or the other concerning the application itself? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt again, but the, we did receive an email late this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Um. If you'd like me to read it.
Would you please? Thank you.
Hey, it, um. To the members of the town of Verona Quay's only Board of Appeals, please accept this letter in support. Of our neighbors at seven Ontario View Street. After analyzing the five factors which must be considered when deciding to grant an area variance. It is our opinion that the variances should be granted as requested. One, this will not change the character of the neighborhood. However, the fencing and shed will enhance. The adjoining properties in both appearance and safety. Two, only alternatives are unreasonably cost prohibitive. Aesthetically unpleasing to both the applicant and the neighbors. Or would unnecessarily require the applicant to purchase a smaller shed or relocate the shed closer to the residence. Due only to the irrelevance of the vacant status of the back parcel. Number three, would deem the magnitude unsustainable. Four, there would be, there are no adverse physical or environmental impacts. Five, the situation is only self-created in that the applicant wishes to have a modern usable shed. For those reasons, we hope you approve those area variances respectfully, uh, Tracy Miller and Jason Vanat of 12 Oakmont Drive.
Thank you. We will close the hearing with respect to this matter and. We will be in recess until, uh, 8:45. Why? Is that Mr. Kimball that's up on the participant board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's. And who else is up there?
Deota is also with Vanguard Engineering.
Oh, okay. So we don't have anyone here. Let's see, we have. 63 Suburbans here. Mr. Kimball is up there. Is anyone still here for? Baby Road? Does not appear so. And then. And seven Ontario Street, you're here. Okay. Okay. Now we're going to call the meeting back to order. The applicants who. Are still present. Are 63 Suburban Avenue. 688 Seneca Road. six eighty-eight Seneca Road, and seven Ontario View Street.
And?
So, we'll take...
Six eighty-eight's here.
Six fifty-one Lake Shore.
Six fifty-one.
Six fifty-one Lake Shore was adjourned.
Oh, that's right.
We tabled that. Right? Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Sorry.
My first time doing a board meeting.
The other gentleman who was tabled as well asked me if he needed to stay around, and I said, "No," and I apologize. I didn't realize that you were unaware of that either.
Did I take a sign with me? Do I need to post the sign again?
Did we close that public hearing?
No.
No.
He does not need to post it. It was adjourned.
It was adjourned.
To the next meeting, so there's no need to repost it.
No.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, take care. Sorry for keeping you around, although the... We do try and make it interesting. All right, so, the first matter for consideration is the application pertaining to sixty-three Suburba Avenue. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we grant the application as requested by the applicant based on the following facts and findings. So, possible change to the neighborhood character. Uh, there wouldn't necessarily be a change to the character of the neighborhood because many people in the Town of Aronacoy own fences and on corner lots and, um, you know, have them in their front yard and backyard as well. Uh, alternative solution, she talked about the fact that they didn't have a sidewalk, and so, um, she didn't want to lose, uh, a lot of grass and, um, uh, property by, by adhering to, uh, the Town of Aronacoy sidewalk where it had to be a certain amount of, um, length, uh, from the sidewalk to the house, and she, they don't have a sidewalk, and so, she, uh, the applicant stated that, um, you know, it wouldn't be a hindrance to plowing or, or cars going through. Um, as far as, uh, concerning request, uh, uh, that the variance would be substantial, it would not be a, a sub, it's not a substantial request. Um, considering whether the area variance will have an adverse effect on the physical conditions of the neighborhood. It's not going to block any views. Uh, as she stated in the, her application, it's going to be, uh, the four-foot, um, fence, and then the situation is, is self-created, and it's not self-created in the fact that they do want a fence, but she did contact the Town of Aronacoy's Planning and Zoning Department and discussed alternatives and, and, um, as far as what, uh, she and her fiance could do to mitigate any self-created situation.
I'll second. Any discussion? I would also just note for the findings that the fence type that she's, uh, that the applicant's proposed is a picket fence, which is an open kind of fence, uh, and that the four feet would allow for a uniform height, which I, I think it make, is much more aesthetically pleasing to have a uniform fence than to have something that part is one height, part is another height. Anyone else wish to add anything to the... All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor. No opposed. No abstentions. One board member remains absent. Moving on to the next application, six eighty-eight Seneca Road. As part of the application materials that were sent to us, did everyone receive and have an opportunity to review the short environmental assessment form that was dated February seventeenth, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. So, I would make a motion that we, uh, adopt a negative declaration.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstention, one member is absent. I will make a motion that we approve the, uh, application as submitted based upon the following findings of fact. The possible change to the neighborhood character uh, is that another home will be built, but this is, with the exception of the, uh, yacht club, uh, this is in a area that is populated with homes, uh, mostly homes that are overlooking the water uh, and, um, blending in with the, uh, the, with the environment. The alternative that doesn't require a variance would, uh, the applicant testified would result in adverse, potentially environmental, uh, concerns, which were addressed by the, uh, planning board, both in the two thousand and ten, uh, proceedings concerning the initial subdivision approval and at the meeting that they held on, or about April twenty-sixth of this year. Uh, it is not a substantial request. The, will not have a adverse effect on physical or environmental conditions if it's granted. Uh, it's self-created only in the sense that it's, uh, the, it's, uh, being designed to blend into the existing, um, configuration of the lot and the accommodate, um, the, uh, owner's needs in terms of having essentially two living stories, which is not at all uncommon, but because of the way it's configured on the lot, uh, they have to put that, uh, other portion in. In terms of the height of the structure, it's twenty feet in the back, it's, which is ten feet less than what the code requires. In the front is nine feet over, uh, and it's the confi, the differences in the heights is because of the, uh, angle on which the property is built. The applicant's, uh, engineer testified, moving the property back further to conform with the, uh, front setback would adversely impact the environmental conditions, and that the lot size or lot location, the footprint of the home, is consistent with what was, um, discussed and determined to be appropriate, uh, both in two thousand and ten and two thousand and twenty-one. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second, I have one, one addition.
Certainly.
I'd like to just note that the twenty-foot setback, uh, actually environment will be better for the environment because they're not digging into the hill, but it, also that it's in conformance with the recommendation of the planning board.
Absolutely. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. One board member remains absent. Next application is pertaining to seven Ontario View Street. This is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? Okay, I'll make a motion that we grant the variances as requested based upon the following findings of fact. The possible change to the neighborhood character is nil. Uh, the alternatives that don't require a variance are, are not aesthetically desirable, nor, uh, are they compatible with the maximum beneficial use of the applicant's property. It is not a substantial request. It will not have any adverse physical or environmental effect in the, in the neighborhood. Uh, it's not self-created. It's created because of the fact that there are two separate parcels that are contiguous and owned by the same property owner, only one of which has a residence, uh, developed on it, and as a condition of the, uh, variance, it would be that the, um, two lots are to be conveyed together in the future.
I'll second.
When one takes a look at the, uh, survey, the, uh, fencing that he's asking for is at the, a lower level, so, and it's compatible with the fence of the neighbor to the adjoining property in height and the shed. When the parcels are combined, as I noted during the discussion, we'll have a sixty-eight foot setback. The ordinance request is a four. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. One board member remains absent. The last application for consideration pertains to, uh, the property at three ninety-seven and four oh seven Bayview Road. Uh, this is a type-two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
Are we, are we just approving just an amendment to the relocation?
Yes, this is a, uh, amendment of the previously granted variance to allow for the garage to be built in a different portion of the property. Uh, actually, it's on the adjoining property, again, which is owned by the same owner as in the last case.
Pardon? I was gonna, I'll, I'll make a motion that we amend the previous variance that was granted in, uh, November two thousand and twenty. Um, subject to the one condition that the, that separate parcel cannot be conveyed. I guess I'll have to look to the deputy attorney to ask how we word that, but...
I'm sorry, I, I missed it. I apologize.
We, we want to approve the, um, the amendment that he asked for with the caveat, uh, that the property not be conveyed separately in the future.
I think it would be, the condition would be just as, as worded.
What I've written down is the vacant lot upon which the, uh, structure is to be built, will only be conveyed with the residence.
Okay. I like it when you put words in my mouth. Uh, and subject all the other, uh, conditions and findings of the original.
Do I have a chance to just, uh, interject for one quick second? Or is my, is my chance to speak over?
Isn't your application already done?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm. Mr. Upson had said that there was, might be a secondary, uh, variance that would need it because it's a sec, uh, accessory structure on a vacant lot.
We took care of that.
You did with the...
Yeah, we're all set.
Yeah, you're, you're comfortable.
You're, you're all good to go. Move it right in, put it, plop it right down where you want it. You too. All right, um... Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries, six votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. One board member remains absent. I believe that concludes all of the...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to revisit six eighty-eight Seneca Road.
Yes.
Um, and, um, um, recommend that it be a type-two action pursuant to seeker versus an unlisted negative declar, declaration, which the motion was made for, which would have to be redacted or taken off. I'm not sure. Nate?
Well, the, if, if the record is revised to, to reflect that this is a type-two action, which it is under section sixteen seven, six seventeen point five C, I believe sixteen and seventeen, um, as a single-family residence, um, and issue variance, then with that correction, the record there, I don't believe any formal action is needed with respect to that motion, which is now moved.
Great, thank you.
Just to be on the safe side, though, is there any opposition to anyone on the board, all six of us who voted for that, to, uh, amending that to reflect that it's a type-two action for secret purposes? Speak now or forever hold your peace.
No.
No opposition, therefore, we're amended. Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Last item of business before we adjourn for the evening is the minutes from the lengthy meeting we had in April. Everyone have a chance to review those minutes? Any additions, corrections? You're moving to approve them, Brad?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. One member of the board remains absent, and we have concluded... Oh, I did want to make one other, uh, note for the record. Uh, between our last meeting and this meeting, I understand that the town board has, uh, approved F.L. Gorman as an alternate member of our board, who will, uh, join us when we know in advance that a board member's not going to be present.
Then, the invitation for June. I'll see you all in July.
All right, well, thank you. Enjoy. I hope you're going someplace good.
Oh, it's my birthday, and not that I don't love you gentlemen, but, um, I, I'm gonna make other plans.
By all means. Early happy birthday.
You can join after the meeting. I'll, I'll send you to the after-party.
All right.
Michelle, do you want the tabled stuff back? You want us to hold on to table, the tabled information? You want us to keep it, or?
Why don't you give it back to me? Because then I will have...
I will, I will put it all together with whatever new documents that I receive.
Stone.
That make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Sounds good.
Hi, Michelle. I got a lot. I haven't seen you in like five months.
I know, right?
Here it all is.
Happy early birthday.
Thank you, honey.